All right. I'd like to let everybody know that I think Wyman over there has large print agendas, if that would be helpful to anyone. And so that said, I will call the meeting to order. This is a regular meeting in the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, September 22nd, 2020. And I'll ask our city clerk Denise Pierce to call a roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
Here.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Jim Reed?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Here.
Rick Evans?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Kathy Jaycox?
Here.
Ernest Kate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We are at item four, and I would like to ask Ronnie Treat to join me at the podium for a presentation. I'm gonna, I'd like to read some, and then you'll have an opportunity, I know, I'm sure you want to speak. All right, well, I'm gonna take this off while I read. And this is a proclamation from the office of the mayor of the city of Springdale. Whereas a petition was presented to the city council with hundreds of signatures obtained requesting the annexation of Bethel Heights into the city of Springdale and that the subject be placed on a special election ballot. And whereas Ronnie Treat, a valued citizen of Springdale, Arkansas, was instrumental in obtaining hundreds of signatures in order to have the measure placed on the ballot, dedicating personal time to supporting the subject at hand. And whereas on Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, the voters from the city of Bethel Heights and the city of Springdale overwhelmingly supported a ballot measure to approve the consolidation of Bethel Heights into the city of Springdale. And whereas on Friday, August 21st, 2020, the city of Bethel Heights was officially consolidated into the city of Springdale, Arkansas. And whereas the consolidation will be of great value to the residents of the former Bethel Heights and whereas the city of Springdale has welcomed over 2,500 new residents into our city. And whereas the city of Springdale will see tremendous gain from the consolidation. Now therefore, I Doug Sprouse, mayor, do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of September 2020 as Ronnie Treat Day. I just happen to think we could've done Ronnie a favor and done this a little earlier in the day. His day's almost over. Ronnie, would you like to say something?
No, fine, I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Ronnie. Appreciate it. I think I need to also recognize Sarah Manueler, and I don't think Sarah's here, but she works in Denise's office across the hall, and I think she was in constant contact with Ronnie, getting updates, and so I thank you again for what you did, and that, you know, I'm, we'd probably still be gathering signatures if it hadn't been for you, so thank you. All right. Moving on now to item five. This is the portion of our meeting that the council sets aside for comments from our citizens. If we have residents that would like to address the council, the council will hear brief comments. We ask that you go to the microphone, you clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, and understand that the council won't take action on what you bring forward tonight. They won't take action tonight on what you bring forward. That's probably a better way to say that. Is there anyone who would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Okay. Louise, do we have anybody on the phone? Okay. All right, we will move on then to the approval of minutes. Council, if there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
I move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, thank you. Item seven, procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move A and B.
Second.
We have a motion for A and B. Roll call, please.
Watson?
Here.
Yes.
Overton? Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Jaycox, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Here.
carries eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item eight, and I'm gonna turn this over to our city attorney, Ernest Kate.
Thank you. This is an ordinance annexing certain property in the city of Springdale, Washington County, Arkansas, and the property is coming in at the request of the property owner from Washington County. A map of the property is located on page 14 of your packet if you have any questions. I thought Mr. Harwell was gonna be here. He represents the property owners, but...
I read it. I move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? Anyone else in the room on this issue? All right, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
All right. Okay, we are ready. Item nine, planning commission report recommendations. Patsy Christie, director of planning and community development. Patsy?
The first item on the agenda is an ordinance to correct a Scrivener's error on the final plat of Phase One of the cottages at the Park subdivision that was approved back in July. There are a couple of street names that were not on the plat correctly when it was filed, and what this ordinance does is create, corrects those Scrivener's errors, and they will file a new final plat with the names on it. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 5488, accepting the final plat of Phase One of cottages at the Park subdivision to the city of Springdale, Arkansas to correct a Scrivener's error and declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further comments or discussion? It's redundant. Comments or questions? All right, anyone? All right, Denise?
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
The emergency clauses included on all these ordinances because there's pending action that needs to be taken. The next item is a replat of, a replat of lots eight through 11, block six of Carter Edition. This is to create two lots. Planning commission review this replat recommends approval of the replat. Title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance accepting the replat of said replat of lots eight through 11, block six, Carter Edition to the city of Springdale, Arkansas, declaring an emergency."
Move the ordinance pass.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Anyone need to speak to this? Okay, Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
The next item is a rezoning request for property located at 304 West Sunset. The request is to rezone the property from general commercial district C2 to thoroughfare commercial district C5. Planning commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance amending ordinance number 3307," the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springdale, Arkansas, and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from general commercial district C2 to thoroughfare commercial district C5 and declaring an emergency.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Patsy, is this because they're gonna have a drive-through?
Yes, that's the reason they asked to have it rezoned, yes.
Anyone in the audience? Sure, come on, come on up to the microphone.
Just happy to take any questions or comments on this if there's, if there's any.
Okay.
My parents came alone last time, so if you guys have any questions for them, I'm happy to translate for them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. I don't think there are any questions from the council, so we'll just go ahead and call for the vote.
Okay?
Okay? Thank you.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
Gotta reach out from my papers back to where, back to where I was. The next item is a conditional use for a use unit 52 food truck court in a C2 district. This is a 1.6 acre tract on Highway 265 located between Casey's and Dollar General. It's gonna be our first food truck court after we adopted the new regulations setting this, setting this out. Planning commission reviewed this request and recommends approval of the conditional use. I, I need to point out that once the conditional use is approved, they will come back with a large-scale development plan so that we can deal with all the details of drainage and paving and landscaping and all the things. But I can tell you, they put together a really good plan that addresses the issues that we had with the food truck court itself.
I know it'll be addressed during, during their large scale, but will they have individual water and sewer hookups there?
Yes.
For each one of the...
All that's required in the ordinance itself, and they'll deal, they will look at all the, the details, and, and they know that. We've been through this two or three times, and I can tell you Greg's really serious about doing this, put a lot of work into this. I think it's gonna really be a top-quality food truck court in Springdale when we get all this stuff put together. It's, it's a pretty good investment, and it'll have bathrooms, it'll have a manager, it'll have paved areas for all of the trucks, it'll have storage for their equipment so things don't have to sit outside, so. Planning commission recommends approval of this conditional use. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use for 1.68 acres between Casey's and Dollar General on the east side of Highway 265, Washington County parcel 81536109000," has set forth an ordinance number 4030.
Move the resolution pass. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions?
So, the access to this, is it gonna come off of the highway, or is it gonna come off of Casey's?
The vehicle access will be off of 265.
Okay.
They talked about the possibility of having a break in the fence or at the gate so you can walk into it from the subdivision and not have to drive around. But we'll look at all those kind of details, but there will be no vehicle access off of the east side.
Are they gonna connect to the parking lot of Casey's and Dollar General?
Um, I don't believe, that's... Is there one, one cross tie? I mean, we haven't got into all those details, but, you know, we're...
See what the thought process was on the access to this.
Yeah, we'll, we'll look at that as a possibility. If you look at that drawing, it kinda looks like there would be one, and Jim, you may want to address that, but that's a huge...
Just for clarification, there is cross-access with Casey's General Store. There's actually a cross-access easement already plotted with the subdivision...
That's to Casey's?
With Casey's.
Yeah, okay.
For a shared access for both those lots. The, the drive itself's already paved on the north side of the Casey's lot, and that will actually be one of the entrances into this site for fire department apparatus and access. We've got a fire lane all around the property, and the main access will be off of Old Missouri Road, off of 265.
I'm, I'm seeing the drawing there, I'm assuming that's got dumpster space.
Yeah, we'll have all of that stuff that's been required.
Are there any screening requirements?
There is a privacy fence already on the east side of that lot, which they will have to maintain. It was put up with the subdivision when, to screen that from the residential area, and so they'll maintain that. They're gonna do some landscaping back there as well.
Will that be a requirement that they maintain it?
Yes, that will be a requirement. They have to maintain the screening to the, to the residential, yeah.
Any other questions? Anyone else in the room?
Again, I'll say, I know they put a lot of time and effort into getting this to meet, because we have lots of requirements, we really do.
Yeah, I was, I was at the planning commission meeting. I, I think it's a pretty neat project, so, hope it's successful. Okay, Denise?
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Did I vote?
You said, "here."
Oh, Watson. Oh, I skipped you, Watson.
Here.
I did always skip you, I don't know why, sorry. I think that's ever happened. Lose my mind.
Okay, the next item is a conditional use for a use unit 41, which is an automobile sales at, in a C2, C2 district at 853 Plaza Court. Planning commission reviewed this request. They provided us with a drawing to show how many spaces would be available on this site for vehicles for sale, and the conditional, the conditions that the planning commission is recommending that it be limited to the five spaces shown on their site plan that would be, those are the only five spaces the vehicles for sale will be at any given time.
Isn't adjacent property also already C6?
The adjac, yes. They didn't want to rezone it to C6, because it was C6 before, and they rezoned it back to C2, and now they want the conditional use for this, so that's kinda how this one's working. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use at 853 Plaza Court has set forth an ordinance number 43, and it's a use unit 41."
Move the resolution pass.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions or comments? Anyone in the room? All right, Denise?
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
Okay, and then the next one is a tandem lot or curb gutter and sidewalk for a single-family dwelling at 8915 East Brown Road, and again, it's to waive the requirement for sidewalks.
Move the resolution pass with option one.
Second. All right, there it is.
I've already gone to the next one, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's all right. That's all right. Anybody have any more questions about it? It's been properly motioned second. Okay. Denise?
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
All right, thank you.
Item 10, Community Development Block Grant Program Committee. Chair is Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, mayor. We got one item before us tonight. Actually, it came to us a while back, but it's, it's actually a resolution adopting the, and approving the 2020 Action Plan for Community Development Grant Program. It doesn't have anything to do with COVID money, but it's something that I think Patsy brought to us a while back, and it's a disbursement basically of the approximately $800,000.
Okay.
Move the resolution pass.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Powell?
Yes.
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Lawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Evans?
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause carries eight zero.
And the next one is a request to waive street improvements, drainage, curb gutters, and sidewalks in connection with a large-scale development for paint innovators. The location of this piece of property, the master street plan shows the extension of Emma on the north side of this piece of property, and with the alignment that's been selected for the, it has been relocated away from this location, so they're asking for a waiver to not have to do that street improvement since we'll be amending the master street plan to show the location of the new alignment for the property that's going through. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb guts, and gutters, and sidewalks, has set forth in ordinance number 3725 to paint innovators in connection with L 2027, a large-scale development."
Move the resolution pass.
I'm not sure I really understood what you just said. Why does the fact that we're moving the location of Emma Avenue...
Well, it's shown on the master street plan where they would have to do the street improvements along the north side of this piece of property. We're not gonna build two streets in there, so this, the master street plan will be amended to relocate it to the new alignment, but it hasn't been done yet, so it's on the master street plan, and what he's at, what we're asking for is a waiver of that requirement with this large scale, because the, the street improvements will be built with that, with that bond program project.
On the north side?
Yes.
And that's what you're asking to waive?
Yes.
Just the north side?
Just the north side, right. The improvements to 40th Street's already been done, it doesn't have a street access on the side, on the south side, so this would be the only piece left.
Okay. Anybody?
We need a second.
Oh, we didn't get a second?
Second.
Okay, now we do. No other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Jaycox?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Watson?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Chair's eight zero.
All right, thank you. Item ten, Community Development Block Grant Program Committee. Chair is Mike Lawson. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. We got one item before us tonight. Actually, it came to us a while back, but it's, it's actually a resolution adopting the, and approving the twenty twenty action plan for community development grant program. It doesn't have anything to do with COVID money, but it's something that I think Patsy brought to us a while back, and it's a disbursement basically of the approximately eight hundred thousand dollars.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Anyone? Okay, Denise?
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Chair's eight zero.
All right, thank you. We're at item eleven, Police and Fire Committee. Chairman Brian Powell. Brian?
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items on the agenda tonight, and both were forwarded to the committee for recommendation of approval. First, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of an architect contract for renovation of Fire Department Station Number Four. This will be to renovate the showers and restroom areas of this, which is much needed for this station. And if we need Chief come up, he can expand on that a little bit further.
Thank you. Basically, this is to try to help with decon of our individuals. We just have one shower in that actual facility for five to six individuals. And so it makes it very difficult for them when they're coming back, especially off of the pandemic calls and those kind of things, to take showers, as we're now requiring them to do. Plus, any type of fires or anything like that. So we're looking at a way to kind of extend the life of that station as much as we can with the least amount of cost possible.
And how old is this station?
Uh, this station was built in nineteen eighty-two.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise?
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Chair's eight zero.
Next on our agenda, we have a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract for the design and development of an ambulance supplemental payment program and for other purposes. And Chief, would you expand on that for our listeners?
Yeah, basically what this is, is this is a consulting group that is working across the country to develop a supplemental pay program through the Medicare system. It is money that's already allocated by the federal government. It sets in a pot, and it's to help offset the, the loss basically that ambulance services acquire when we actually transport Medicare patients, because they don't pay a hundred percent of that back to us. There has to be state legislation that has been done, and that's what this group is currently working on. Just as an example, Central EMS, MEMS, who does all the ambulance service in Little Rock, and Rogers Fire Department has signed on as well. If they can get the members to sign on, usually the legislature at the state kind of takes note of that. They pass that, and then we get some supplemental pay out of that system. And it doesn't cost the city anything. Basically, they'll take a percentage of whatever they can collect, and other than that, it doesn't cost us anything. So we should see some extra revenue from this if it passes.
Mayor, is this a function that our grant writer might be able to serve in the future? Isn't that one of the reasons why we hired the person to be a grant writer?
No. That, that's a possibility. You know, I think we're, of course, there, she's about tied up, in fact, I almost mentioned it on our last, on our last item when we talked about the renovations of Station Four. There is a, a real opportunity, and she and, she and Colby especially are working very hard right now with the league and with the, on some COVID-related grants that, so, so they, they're up to their eyeballs right now.
I understand, but in the future, is this not something that?
I think you're, yes.
Which would be another benefit for having a.
Absolutely.
A grant applicant writer. And if they, and if these, these folks hit fifteen percent, that's a substantial amount could come in, in the future, so.
Right, no, that's a good, that's a good point. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Denise?
I don't have a motion.
What?
I don't have a motion.
Oh, we don't have a motion even.
I'll move the resolution pass.
Now we got one, and a second. All right, thank you.
Overton.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Jay Cox.
Yes.
Williams.
Yes.
Watson.
Chair's eight zero.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Chief. Item twelve, Street and Capital Improvements, CIP, Chairman Rick Evans. Rick?
Yeah, when we were meeting last week, we had one agenda item brought forward to the council today, and it was recommended for approval as a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein Wendell, Kevin Brown, and Carla Annette Taylor are defendants. I'll turn it over to Ernest. Let him explain it to us.
Thank you. As we said at committee, this is a kind of a split down the middle proposed settlement. The city's estimated just compensation was sixty-nine thousand. I believe the property owner's appraisal was one sixty-one. They had, we met with the mayor, Mr. Lyles here, we met, met, and he, his clients have agreed to propose the settlement of one twenty-five, which is basically splitting the difference between the two appraisals, and then recognizing that they would be entitled to receive as compensation certain costs if the case were to go to trial. Appraisal costs. Not attorney fees.
Oh, good. I'd like to see this devoid of attorney fees, if that's possible.
Steve's here. If you have any additional questions or?
Considering it has, we did have a great, we had opportunity to discuss it with the mayor's office, and since it was recommended by committee, I'll just reserve comment. Excuse me, unless you have a comment, a question or any hesitation about it.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions?
There are always hesitations with Mr. Lyles.
All right, Denise?
Reed.
Yes.
Lawson.
Yes, ma'am.
Evans.